Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'd like to welcome each of you here tonight. Let's call this meeting to order, and if you would stand, Councilman Marie will offer our invocation and lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, please give us the strength and the wisdom to come through the budget considerations. Give us the time and the patience and the ability to listen to our neighbors as we go through these budget deliberations. Also, let us give thanks for the resiliency of our residents here in town and their continuing volunteerism that they have in the schools and the civic organizations. And, Lord, please watch over all our armed forces and those in harm's way. Watch over our firefighters and police and all those residents we have who are going through difficult times. Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some special presentations that we're going to make tonight in honor of our Vice Mayor Binks Holloway. And I'm going to ask if the family, who is well represented here tonight, thank you for that, would join me at this podium. I appreciate it. Everybody, all of you, please. Let me know when you can get them all by. I don't need to be in this. We okay? I just want to make sure that he was getting everybody. Oh, there you are. There you are. Before I make some comments tonight, let me introduce, and it's a pleasure to introduce, Senator John Miller, who represents the city of Pecosin and the state senate in Richmond. John is not only a friend of this city, he's a friend of Binks', and he's certainly a friend of mine. And, John, we appreciate you taking the time and being here tonight. And if you would, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to read Senate Joint Resolution Number 208, "Celebrating the Life of Arthur V. Holloway." Whereas Arthur V. Holloway, a devoted and admired public servant from Pecosin, died on January 24, 2010; and whereas Arthur A. V. Holloway was born to loving parents, Mary Emma and Baden Holloway Sr., and was one of eight siblings; and whereas a diligent student and outstanding athlete, A. V. Holloway was a graduate of Pecosin High School, where he was an All-American Honorable Mentioned Football Player in 1960; and whereas a hard-working and valued employee, A. V. Holloway retired from North of Grumman Shipbuilding and was employed with CSC as a consultant; and whereas A. V. Holloway loved the city of Pecosin and devoted countless hours throughout his life to serving the city and its citizens; and whereas A. V. Holloway's service began as a volunteer firefighter for the city of Pecosin, where he also served as an Assistant Chief, and then served two terms on the Pecosin City School Board beginning in 1982; and whereas A. V. Holloway then ran for Pecosin City Council and was first elected in 1994, he served 16 years, including the past seven years, as Vice Mayor; and whereas during his time on the city council, A. V. Holloway served for almost 11 years on the Virginia Municipal League Environmental Quality Policy Committee and was instrumental in the development of the city of Pecosin; and whereas A. V. Holloway worked diligently to help the city construct Little League ballfields, a new elementary school, two fire stations, in addition to implementing curbside garbage pickup; and whereas after Hurricane Isabel devastated Pecosin in 2003, A. V. Holloway worked with fellow city council members and the community to help rebuild the city, including the redevelopment of White House Cove; and whereas A. V. Holloway lived his faith through his actions as a member of the Trinity United Methodist Church, where he was a member of the George W. Amis Men's Choir, past president of the United Methodist Men, past chairman of the Council of Ministries, a member of the Staff Parish Committee, and an adult Sunday School teacher; and whereas a compassionate and dedicated man, A. V. Holloway leaves behind a lasting legacy of service to his family, his church, and his community; and whereas A. V. Holloway will be fondly remembered for his kind and generous nature and greatly missed by his loving wife of 47 years, Jackie, his children Tracy and Sandra, and their families, his numerous other family members and friends, and the residents of Pecosin. Now therefore be it resolved by the Senate, the House of Delegates concurring, that the General Assembly of Virginia note with great sadness the loss of a dedicated public servant, Arthur V. Holloway, and be it resolved further that the Clerk of the Senate prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to the family of Arthur V. Holloway as an expression of the General Assembly's respect for his memory. Signed, Susan Clark Scharr, Clerk of the Senate. It's a great honor that I present this to the family. Thank you.
Before I make some prepared remarks, let me just say that tonight is difficult, not only for me, but certainly the family that stands to my left. Binks was much more than a colleague of mine, much more than a devoted friend. He was, better put, the brother that I never had. Tonight is very difficult for this family, but Binks' strength will be their strength as we make these presentations tonight. As I thought about it today, I thought that never in my wildest thoughts would I have ever believed that we would be in this place for this reason, to pay tribute to Binks tonight. And as hard as this event is on all of us, I am truly blessed to be the one who has the privilege of speaking on behalf of the citizens of Pecosin. When I reminisce of my years on council, this night will stand out. And Jackie, I want you to know, and I want your family to know, how much joy and I appreciate you allowing us. It was a gift to be with Binks at MCV and to this day have the consideration that your family is my family. And so tonight it is my honor and it's my privilege to pay tribute to the late Vice Mayor and my friend, Binks Holloway. As we remember Binks this evening, we will remember his family, those that steadfastly supported him as Binks served this city for well over 21 years. I do not pretend tonight to possess the vocabulary nor the eloquence to adequately describe what Binks meant to his family and to this city. It's difficult to describe the indescribable. Binks began to serve this city at a very young age. He was a member of the Volunteer Fire Department, where he rose to the rank of Assistant Chief, and he led there by example, a trait of all good leaders. For many years, he served those who had met with disaster and catastrophic medical issues. Wherever there was a need for help or support, he would find Binks. In 1982, Binks was asked to serve the city once again as a member of the Pecosin School Board. He needed only to be asked, and he was ready to serve. Binks loved the young people of Pecosin, and he fought to give our children the education that is envied across the Commonwealth today. The facilities that exist today are a direct result of the efforts of Binks Holloway. Binks was elected to the city council in 1994 and was appointed by the members of city council to serve as Vice Mayor for the last seven years. No one could have had a more loyal or more supportive Vice Mayor. Binks knew all too well that being a member of this council, or any council, would be a difficult task, but Binks was not shaken by the task that he would undertake. He served with great desire and with great distinction, always a listener, always a gentleman, always one who loved this city as well as those that call Pecosin their home. Binks was a loyal friend, to that I can attest. His friendship was pure and it was genuine. If you were fortunate enough to be a friend of Binks Holloway's, you needed a little more in this life. I am honorably flanked by Binks' family tonight, and they too deserve a hearty well-done as they gladly shared the life of their loved one with all of us. How much more could anyone ask of a family than to share their husband or their father, their brother, their grandfather, with all of us and the needs of this community? I so admire this family as they courageously stood by Binks day after day after day. They struggled with the peaks and the valleys of his condition, and they never wavered. This family actually encouraged others, as did Binks, throughout his whole ordeal. I know that the hearts of this family are broken, and I know the empty feeling that they carry. We can only pray that letting them know our hearts are broken as well will bring them some solace. Jackie, you were especially strong. You truly were the lighthouse in the storm. You were the light at the end of the tunnel when you became the glue that held everyone together. In closing, I've wondered how we could adequately pay tribute to such a phenomenal man and how could we really thank him for the sacrifices that he made to make this city what it is today? I have not found an answer to that question. However, I think I know what Binks would say. He would say, "Thanks for allowing me to serve." He would want this city to move forward. He would say, "Love your God, love your family, and love your city." The light that burns so brightly here has not gone out. In fact, it burns much brighter in his new home. Binks always wanted to see the streets of gold. He talked about that in conversation with me, and now he walks on them. He always wanted to see the Tree of Life, and now he eats from it. And he especially wanted to see the Crystal Sea, and I'm sure he now sails that. Tonight, there are no goodbyes, only fine memories, and thanks for our loved one, for our colleague, and for our friend, who now resides just above the Rainbow. Jackie, on behalf of council, this is a resolution that we adopted on March 8, 2010 in memoriam of Binks. I want you to have that. This was taken from the photos that have honorably displayed Binks' picture and his nameplate in the Hall of City Hall, and we certainly want you to have that, Senator. And a eulogy that was done at Binks' funeral. It was thought appropriate to have this printed and framed for the family. And it's a pleasure for me, Jackie, to present. These are the prepared comments, Jackie, from tonight. I can't tell you how much I appreciate you all being here. It means a lot to this council. It means a lot to me. These chambers will not be the same. They will never be the same. And we just, you know, we just hope that God will bless you and bring you some peace. And, you know, we miss him, and we'll miss him for years to come. But I thank you so much for allowing us to pay tribute to him, and thank you for lending him to us. We appreciate it.
And all of this appreciation and applause is for this family and Binks' memory.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our audience for visitors. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address council on any issue at this time, we'd be delighted to hear from you. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. We have two sessions. If we could take those individually, please.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the minutes from the regular session of March 22, 2010.
Okay, we have a motion made in second. We adopt our regular session minutes from March 22, 2010. Any concerns, comments, questions regarding those minutes? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Epstein.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of four to zero with one extension.
Thank you, Judy. End of work session, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes of the work session of March 22.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made in second, and we adopt our work session meeting minutes as well. Any concerns, comments regarding those? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Epstein.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of four to zero with one extension.
Thank you, Judy. We'll move to item F, the public hearing that we have on the agenda tonight. There is only one. Has to do with an ordinance conveying a certain 30,750-square-foot utility easement to Dominion Virginia Power. Mr. Wheeler?
Just the only thing I would add for the people that may be watching us at home. This relates to the AT&amp;T cell tower at South Loston Park.
Okay. Any comments of council before we open the public hearing? Is there a presentation or anything?
Not unless you'd like one.
Okay. No, 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 no. No, that's good. Okay, let's open the public hearing then and ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to make any comments regarding this ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, you might want to open the bid and read the bid.
Yes, I do want to open the bid. Judy, thank you for reminding me of that. We have one. Can't wait to see you. Dear Council, in response to your legal notice in Daily Press dated March 26, 2010, and April 2, 2010, Dominion Virginia Power hereby submits a bid of $1 for a 15-foot underground easement on city-owned property located on Pecosin Avenue. Proposed right-of-way agreement pertains to tax-mac parcels. I will read all of those as shown on the attachment. Thank you for your consideration, Lori H. Roundtree, Senior Right-of-Way Agent. Okay. Was there anyone that wanted to address this? If not, then we will close the public hearing and ask for consideration from council.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt an ordinance of the city of Pecosin, Virginia, conveying a certain 30,750-square-foot utility easement to Dominion Virginia Power.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made in second that we adopt the ordinance. Are there any concerns, comments, any questions? No, Judy, please.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Let's move on to unfinished business. First item is an ordinance amending Article 1, Section 1-3 of the zoning ordinance to add the definition of farmers' market and seasonal items. This is a second reading. We saw it at our last meeting at brief discussion. So we're willing to discuss it further if council so desires. If not, alas, for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by revising Article 1, Section 1 to Act 3 definitions.
Okay, thank you, Gene. Is there a second?
Oh, second, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I just have one question I was asking. The clerk, there's some words under 72, "seasonal item," and I don't know if there's an extra word in there or not. It says, "items such as Christmas trees, seafood, or perishable, or produce, flowers, and/or plants."
Between perishable and produce.
It looks like there's one too many "ors" in there, so.
Between perishable and produce.
So if you could just take out that.
Take out the "or" between perishable and produce.
If I could, I'd like to propose an amendment to item 72 to take out the second "or" in the, in item 72.
Okay, that's fine. Well, it's Gene, if he, his motion, if he wants to amend it, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, and Frank, second.
It's fine, me.
Okay, so we do have a good motion and a second. With those changes. Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Let's move on to item two. It's an ordinance amending Article 10, Section 10-29 of the zoning ordinance to define seasonal sales. Another item we discussed at our last meeting. It's here for our approval tonight. If anyone has a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance re-permitted and conditional uses in the B-2 zoning district.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made in second that we adopt that ordinance. So are there any comments, concerns, questions? No, Judy, please.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on to new business. First item is the presentation of the budget. Mr. Wheeler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You'll see up on the screen some talking points. I also have copies of those here, if members of council would prefer to. They may be a little bit easier for you to read. I would note that tomorrow, both the document, the budget document itself, and these discussion points will be available on our website. Mr. Mayor, members of council, it is my privilege to give you the, my recommendations for the FY 2011 budget. As you know, this is not an easy time for the city of Pecosin or really any jurisdiction in Virginia. This is our third counting fiscal year 2011 budget, our third consecutive difficult budget year. Our problems began mid-year through FY 2009, continued through the adoption of the 2010 process. Now we're looking at 2011 and well beyond. In response to this growing problem, the national and state recession, which was also felt locally, in the current fiscal year 2010, this council and the school board needed to make significant changes to its budget to tighten its belt in order to continue to operate in the face of sharply declining revenues. In this past year, you all have approved programmatic reductions, operational reductions, pay freezes, and between the school system and the city, in the current fiscal year, 25 and a half positions were eliminated. This is the backdrop that we began to develop the 2011 budget on or from. As we developed the budget for the coming year, my recommendations to you, we developed five guiding principles that we hoped to steer by as we developed this budget, in no particular order because they're all equally important. Maintain essential government services. We felt that if at all possible, we needed to protect the essential mission of the city. We have, for appropriate reasons, contracted our resources, but we have attempted to maintain our mission. There have been no major issues that we've identified in terms of things we could stop doing. In fact, there's a laundry list of things we could do more of. As we looked at the basic budget, another guiding principle was to, if possible, maintain local funding for schools. This would be particularly challenging to us as we saw reductions that affected us on the city side of the budget for police, for shared services, for library, for social services, constitutional offices, as well as dealt locally with the impacts of the recession here. A third guiding principle was to maintain the compensation levels and benefits for the city staff. Fourth, protect the jobs of existing city personnel. We have been through this budget line by line, and I can tell you that it is my opinion that there are no positions in it that are not needed. And my goal here in preparing the budget was to protect those jobs, not only because I think the people that work for this city are incredible, but also the jobs that they do are invaluable. Lastly, to prepare a budget to maintain compliance with the city's recently adopted fiscal management guidelines. I'm pleased to tell you that the recommended budget, and I'm going to speak to it as if it was two pieces, and I realize that it's not, but the basic budget, the one that we could put together at the current tax rate, does meet each of those objectives. We maintain local funding for schools. We maintain compliance with your budget principles, maintained employee compensation and benefits. There are no reductions planned in either. No existing city employee loses his job or her job, and our core mission has been protected. We had to do a number of things in order to do that, and we were greatly aided by the city council in your recent decision to refinance the city's debt load. That one decision impacted this budget coming up by almost $500,000. And as we worked to reduce what on the city side, meaning the non-school side, was originally about an $800,000 budget gap, that was critical. Without your vote, this budget would look substantially different. We went through, and we literally went through every line in the budget, and we made reductions where we could while maintaining all of those five key principles. And I'm pleased to tell you that we were able to do that at the current tax rate. But like I said, I'm going to speak of this budget in two pieces, if I could. But I did want to note to you that for reducing the budget again this year, and likely for years to come, there are a number of things that are important, that in terms of new things, that we're just unable to do. And I need to footnote a few of those for you because they're very important. This budget does not address our need for additional police personnel or fire and rescue personnel. I know it says just "fire" there, but for me, fire and fire and rescue are synonymous. We have a tremendous public work staff who operates on a shoestring, and they need help. And an overarching need that we have as a city is to address the city's compensation and pay plan, which is more than a decade since it has been updated. We won't spend much more time on that, but I just wanted to let you know that there are a number of things that I wish that we could have done. There were important things that someday we will need to turn our attention to, but in this budget environment, we were just unable to do that. Let's speak a little bit about the schools budget because, really, this budget, because we could gain adherence in the recommended budget on those five guiding principles, the emphasis, at least my emphasis, then shifted to the school system. I would say that it is, is a delight to work with a superintendent and her staff that are in contact with us. Sometimes it felt like multiple times a day, but on average, I'd say it was about one and a half times a day. We worked through this budget very closely together, and we will continue to do that. That is a partnership. I won't say it's unique in Virginia, but it's special, and I think that that demonstrates the kind of love that this community has for its school system, and I think the respect that both sides of the budgetary unit have for each other. So as I looked at the school system, and I've got some of the key points highlighted here, in the current fiscal year, the one that we're in now, the school system, as this council is well aware, had to make over $1 million worth of reductions in the current budget that we're in now. That's the setting stage for the school system. The 2011 budget has an imbalance in it, which is made up of mandated expenses and reductions in state and federal revenue of about $1.1 million. In fact, the budget that was recently approved by the school board was the school board's best attempt to show you and the community what would be required to balance a budget with that level of imbalance in it, initial imbalance, based on an assumption of level local funding. In the current year, the school system eliminated 12 positions. In the current year, the school system eliminated 12 positions. In the upcoming year, unless the number changes, the school system is looking at the reduction of an additional 14 and a half positions, in addition to the reductions that you see here in materials and supplies, professional development, student testing, employee stipends, and the like. The next graph, really, if this entire budget process could be reduced to a single image, this is it. This is school funding for education. Let's see where we were in 2009, just a couple of fiscal years ago, at approximately $13.2 million. In the year that we're in now, that dropped to 11, no, let's call it 12 million. But next year, we're looking at the prospect of that number being 10.6 million. That's a substantial reduction, and you can see the way that the trend works. Further, if we were to continue this trend out one more year, the budget that was recently passed in the state, the biennial budget, in the second year, which is FY 2012, we predict another shortfall in the school system in addition to what's reflected here of $700,000, made up of a combination of factors. So, as I look out, we have a $1.1 million shortfall in school budget in fiscal year 11. In fiscal year 12, that 1.1 replicates. It's an ongoing reduction, and will be joined by an additional $700,000 worth of reduction. At the same time, the debt service relating to the schools and the debt refinancing will begin to rise back up, and we've got, this council and this community has a commitment to New Horizons, which was made a couple of years ago, for $200,000. If you take those things and you look at it as a two-year budget problem, and I recognize this issue is actually beyond two years, but if you look at it as a two-year state biennial budget problem, we're looking at a budget shortfall relating to schools in excess of $3.2 million. This is based on an assumption that local funding will remain stable. That's a significant reduction. When I first accepted this job in Pecosin before I moved here, as I began to share with people where I was moving to, the first thing I often heard was about our school system and how fantastic it was. There's lots of additional fantastic things I learned once I got here, but sort of that's what we're known for in other parts of the state. And to see this level of reduction, that is of great concern to all of us, I think. This is not something that was conditioned by a drop in local revenues. Our local economy is not driving this. This is things that are being driven, or it's not driven by us, but it would be impacted on us. So, what I am recommending that you consider for the upcoming budget year, and I know there will be many different opinions on this, but my recommendation to you is that you consider an increase in the real estate tax rate of three cents. That will yield approximately $510,000 per year to stay in place at least as long as until such time that the state can return to its historic level of funding. I am recommending for the upcoming fiscal year, $382,845 of that be directly used to increase the local school transfer, and that the balance, $127,155, be placed in a fiscal stability reserve, which would serve two purposes, one of which would be to guard us against worse-than-anticipated drops in state, federal, or local revenue, but more appropriately, or more hopefully, it would serve to help us offset in fiscal year 2012 the increases in the debt service we know are already coming, help us to meet the obligations to New Horizons, which we know are already coming. So, what I'm trying to do with this recommendation is suggest that we provide assistance to the school system to the degree that we can, beyond what we have done in the current year in the face of their reduction, but also that we plan for these additional school-related impacts that will hit us as a community in 2012. Should the council agree, or at least consider, the recommendation for a tax increase, that would be useful, sort of break that down for you. The three cent increase, based on the average household in Pecosin, would equate to $106.94 a year, so less than $9 a month. I realize that's $9 a month that some people don't have, but I thought that it would be helpful to put that in perspective. As the council is aware, on the 26th of this month is the public hearing, which will be held in this room on the budget, in which the council actively wishes that all citizens with an opinion come and share those with us as the city council moves towards a final budget decision in the month of May. The budget is tentatively scheduled for adoption May the 10th, but the date you must, by charter, adopt the budget is May the 22nd. Copies of the budget book will be available as you leave, and my staff and I are ready to assist you in the coming weeks in any manner that we can to help you dissect this budget and answer your questions.
Okay, Randy, thank you very much. Just to echo a few of your comments regarding the school system, we have a fabulous, fabulous superintendent of schools. The relationship, as you've already pointed out, Randy, are special, and she is certainly accessible to this council, she certainly has been to me, and to any questions that I've had, I think she and the school board have just done a phenomenal job in preparing that budget, as have you, Mr. Wheeler. In your short tenure here, I think you have covered those items that council wants to protect at any cost, and I think you've done that, and your staff is to be commended, Randy, for bringing this recommended budget to us. And I do appreciate all the time and the effort, because there has been a tremendous amount that's going into this. I, like other members of council, will, you know, be spending some time with you to see, you know, if we have suggestions that may be helpful to getting this process finished and completed. I don't wish to ask any questions about the budget tonight. We've got the budget, we've got some information that we need to digest, but if council has any comments, sir.
I agree wholeheartedly with what our city manager has done and what you've said, Mr. Mayor, that appreciate getting the budget, and I don't think, I certainly don't have any questions at this point, I want to get into the details first. There is one thing that I would like to do, though, is if we could set up a meeting with the school board, since a lot of this has to do with the school budget, would like to get a meeting going as soon as possible with that.
Sure. Yep. Would you, if I could, Mr. Mayor, would you like us to take a portion of the scheduled work session on the 26th, or would you like us to find?
That would work for me. Would that be all we can? That's fine.
About a half an hour of that meeting?
Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I guess I, no, I don't know if this presentation is still available, but I kind of want to go back, back a couple slides. And I kind of want to emphasize to the citizens, I guess, what we're, what we're looking at here. Go back to the state funding for schools, slide the graph.
Theresa, are we going to be able to do that?
Aye.
Are we going to be able to do that?
Mm-hmm. Just give me a sec.
Bob, will you be able to pick it up? All right, very good. All right, I guess my comments are, and, Mr. Mayor, and Councilman Marie, you both touched on it, but I guess I want to be just a little bit more forthcoming. I want everybody to look at the figures on the graph, not just the graph, okay? We're coming as a, as a, as a school district, basically, not the city side of the budget, but from a school side, only one half, only 40% of our budget, okay? We're coming from $13 million to $11 million this year to $10 million. And though we have some decreases in students, I will tell you that those are very hard-fought changes that I applaud the school superintendent for as well, having come to us with a plan that minimizes those impacts. That doesn't say it does away with those impacts, it minimizes those impacts. So, what this council is doing, and basically what the citizens of Pecosin are doing through their due diligence, and I thank the citizens of Pecosin first and foremost for basically being citizens of good stature that basically allow the city to be of good stature, that saved us $500,000 a year, right off the bat. Council didn't pay the bills, the taxpayers paid the bills. Okay, so that saves us, when you, when you look at that, that's the only reason that the city manager is bringing us a budget with only a three-cent tax increase. Otherwise, you would add a couple more cents to that. Okay, the question is, do we want to cut that deeply into the school system? And that is the only question, and it's too early to have the answer to that, but that's the only question that the citizens need to consider. Do we want to drop from $13 million to $11 million to $10.6 million over the next couple years without coming to the table without additional local funds? I will take the citizen's opinion on exactly how that's to be done, but I would ask you to strongly consider that point in that the number of students, though they have decreased, have not decreased by that number. Some of the things that the school superintendent suggested cutting out are kind of the base level, materials and supplies, professional development, one could argue that, student testing, and employee stipends, which means that you're becoming a more qualified staff. Those were some of the categorical cuts. But when I watched the school superintendent's budget presentation, it went much deeper into positions of which we are retiring but not refilling. And I want to make sure that that is understand, that those 12 positions that were eliminated were from retirement, but when you're down only 200 students and you lose 12 positions, you kind of do the math and you realize that that's probably not that though deep. The question is, can we survive as a school system that we are on that? We have good students, we have good staffs, the question is, how deep do we cut them? That's all I've got for tonight. Like I said, I know we're going to do a lot of work, and I appreciate the work session with the school board. I wanted to make sure that was clear.
You do. Thanks, sir. Any other comments? Okay, if not, I'm sorry.
Not tonight, sir.
Okay. All right, let's move on then to the resolution-making nomination for appointments to various VML policy committees. Is anyone prepared with a motion and some names to submit?
I'm ready with some adjournments. You ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. Mr. Mayor, I'm making a motion now, we adopt the resolution nominating the following people to the VML Policy Commission. To the Community and Economic Development, again this year, Tracy Dale Crawford. Environmental Quality, I think Councilman Marie has probably served as an internship under Tracy in the above position, is ready now to assume his own, his own policy committee.
Think it's all right to move him? You think it's all right to move him?
I, I got some little reservations still, but I just, I'm going out on a limb, Mr. Mayor. Don't disappoint us, Tom.
Okay, thank you for the confidence.
And also, on that committee will be Jeff Blimel. For Finance, Eugene Hunt, and Teresa Owens. General Laws, D. Wayne Moore, and Transportation, Karielle Freeman and Joseph Carter.
Okay.
Help out for yourself for Human Development and Education, Frank A. Krieger.
Second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion made, and we also have a second, that we adopt the resolution with those names inserted to the various commissions. Are there any comments, concerns, any questions before we move on? If not, Judy, please.
I'm assuming there are two motions, seconded both by Marie.
Yes, correct. Two motions.
Two motions.
Right.
All except for Frank, and then including Frank.
Exactly. Okay. Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am. And our final item is a resolution making appointments to the Industrial Development Authority. Anyone prepared with names?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a, a move that we approve a resolution making an appointment to the Industrial Development Authority in the name of Donald F. Booth, Jr., whose term would expire on March 31st, 2014.
Okay.
Seven.
All right, we have a motion made, and second, we adopt the resolution with Mr. Booth's name inserted. Any concerns or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Aye, thank you, ma'am. Comments to the city manager, Mr. Wheeler?
Just have three. I wanted to thank the members of my staff who did an outstanding job while I was away last week. I had the greatest vacation one could ask for with my children, so I thank them for that. I wanted to highlight to you that we did have our bond sale of our refunding bonds and the additional money for the HVAC system repairs, the middle school, and we got a very good rate, and it will have a slightly additional positive impact on us in the upcoming fiscal year. So, when you meet again on the 26th, on the add-to-lease sheet, there'll actually be a plus 20 to start with. So, we did well, and I thank you to Teresa, and to Judy, and to all the people that worked on that, and to you all. As Councilman Hunt said, had not been for your vote, the budget submitted to you this evening would have been substantially different. So, thank you. Lastly, you may have been receiving phone calls, or perhaps even saw it on this evening's Channel 13 news, a piece this evening regarding our recent decision to temporarily close the Kids Island play area. That decision was made last week as we became affirmatively aware of some issues at the play structure itself that would potentially constitute an unsafe environment for children and for families. What I have asked Mr. Callas to do, once I got into town today and had a chance to talk to him, is to move expeditiously to get us both an estimate of what it would cost to bring the facility up to standard, along with the estimate of the time necessary to do that. Is that a weekend project or a several-month project? I don't know the answer to that question. I've charged him to find out the answer to both, and once I have it, I'll be bringing it back to discuss with you and ask for direction on how you'd like to proceed.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. All right. Okay, Jean?
No, the one thing, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for saying that about Kids Island, I guess the community will hear quickly what the plan is from the city or whatever. I know that there was a huge volunteer effort that was undertaken to put that together. I guess I would ask that we keep the leaders of that community effort appraised. The one thing I will say, and I think we've had this issue maybe four years ago, five, is, you know, is it time to replace that facility with something more modern, I guess, is the question? Not that we are saying Pecosin, I mean, that facility has served its time. I remember building it, I remember participating in the building of it, it was tremendous effort. My daughter was three. She's now graduating college. So, the question is, is it time to move on and do something else? I will, I will, again, listen to what the citizens have to say as far as that's regards, but we really kind of need to look at bringing that up to standard overall.
Okay, thank you, Jean. Tom?
Just two things. One is, I wholeheartedly echo your... One is, I wholeheartedly echo your comments earlier about Binks, and Binks was truly a great man, and I feel honored to have served with him for the short time that I The second thing is on Kids Island. Also, I know there are certain volunteer organizations out there that would love to work on Kids Island if the materials are provided. We've worked on that in the past. These budget times are very hard. I would like to upgrade it, too, but if we can't afford to, I know where there's a lot of people who would help doing what we need to fix it, and that is a very used facility. I go by there regularly during the day, and there's a lot of kids there. So that's it.
Okay. Frank?
Kids Island, sir, five years ago, we spent a lot of time talking about it, the pros and cons of rehabbing the facility, or putting in a new playground facility somewhere down around the primary school in that area, and council decided then, because I think it was based upon the manufacturer of the equipment coming to us and saying, hey, this stuff is 100% better than the original equipment. Well, to spend $70,000 and have it last five years doesn't say a whole lot for the reliability or dependability of the equipment. We have playground equipment that was donated by Langley Youth Services or Recreation sitting down in the old landfill that someone said has been deemed unusable. I don't know if it is or if it isn't, but I know it's down there. I would say, let's look close at, you know, what we want to do with Kids Island. I mean, it's a great thought, like Gene said, but things are going to wear out every five years, and we're spending $70,000. If we can get better equipment that is not wood or tire, those kind of things where they chip and break, I'd say go for something else. I mean, and I know there's a lot of die-hard Kids Island mothers out there and fathers that were involved from the very beginning in fundraising and whatever, and they still provide time, but it's a costly item, especially in these days of, you know, our monetary crisis, I guess you might say. The second thing I have, sir, is that I understood a while back that the organizers of the seafood festival workboat races have decided not to continue their involvement this year. They decided, I guess, for 20 years or so that they have dropped out. Conversations with some members of the Yacht Club that I've talked to, they'd be very interested in getting with Mr. Callis from Parks and Recreation and the city manager, and seeing whether they could perhaps continue the role that the original organizers had in continuing the tradition of the races taking part in Pecosin. So sometime in the future, Mr. City Manager, if it's okay with you, one or two people from the Yacht Club will be calling you and coming down and seeing whether, you know, things can be worked out. Maybe the same arrangement that you all had with the other organizers, so.
And just to add to that a little bit, Frank, I asked Dave this week, there are a lot of sponsors of that group, and I also got the email from Crosby, that indicated that the Yacht Club may want to be involved in a sponsorship, which I think is wonderful. And I encourage Dave, since he's actually the one that'll be putting that together, to, you know, seek out those sponsors, because I don't know that they are not willing.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think that's been addressed at this point in time with the sponsors. I would think that the sponsors are probably still 100% behind having the boat race, and with the addition of the Yacht Club, I mean, that's just a plus for us, but, you know, I think we can do it.
I had talked this past Friday night to Crosby, Forrest, and one or two others, you know, longtime Pecosinites, Henry Freeman and those people, and they feel very comfortable that they know the sponsors, that they have used in the past, and they feel very comfortable in going out and talking to the sponsors.
Absolutely wonderful.
Also talking to all the people who were involved in the races itself, you know, who had the boats and whatever. So, you know, they feel confident that, you know, they can take it on. It would still be, I guess, under the sponsorship of the city because of the insurance and liability and that kind of things, but they would do all the work beforehand, you might say.
Yeah, I believe that those sponsors in the past will be sponsors again.
Stay with them.
Absolutely do. Since the sod was our stage, I guess we'd have to pour our stage from somewhere.
I think we can make it happen. I think we can make it happen.
It's much more cost-effective for us to rent or even construct a temporary stage each year than it was to continue to repair the thing that we have.
You're right. The other thing, everybody's mentioned, but Kids Island, and, you know, like Gene, you know, I was there when we opened it years ago. I looked at that donation board today that's posted there, and I believe beyond doubt that those folks who initially put that there, if contacted, would be more than happy to assist us in whatever we decide to do, replacing it with more modern equipment. There's some dangerous equipment there, and you made the right decision, Randy, to close it. It is a well-used piece of property in the city of Pecosin, but it's, you know, it's, we don't want to use it in the condition it's in and have some child hurt. It's the last thing we want to do, but, you know, I see that as something that will materialize, and we certainly need to seek the support and the, those folks, there's two ladies that I'm trying to think of, Fisher, Brenda Fisher is one, and
Debbie Arborel.
And Mrs. Arborel, yeah, who have put in a lot of time and effort, so I'm sure they won't mind being put back on the spot to help us get that done.
I have a calling to Ms. Fisher already.
Okay, great.
So we'll see how we can work them into our
Good deal.
Into our process.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Have a motion adjourned.
Move adjourned.
Sorry. All right. Ms. Wiggins?
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
And Mayor Halsel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, ma'am, and we are adjourned.
So he's adjourned. We're doing good.